I don't, I haven't gotten the high sign, but did you?
No. But it's so.
Okay.
Hello, welcome. I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting for May 21st. May I have an approval of tonight's agenda?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments from the public tonight? Alright, we'll move on to presentations and discussions of interest to the committee. Uh, let's see, our National Council of Teachers, uh, Mathematics Update, is that gonna be you?
Yeah, well, I, um, I am taking second fiddle to a, uh, strong group from the middle school.
Good.
Um, and we have a little PowerPoint that we will share. You have it in front of you. So you needn't move unless you, um, want to, but come on up, gang.
They're getting now, huh?
Thank you.
So, we were, we were fortunate, as you know, we have encouraged, um, math teachers across the district to go to NCTM, um, each year. And oftentimes, uh, Mike Horton goes with the math group. This year, he was going with the science group, so I, um, was a pinch hitter. And I was glad that I, I was. This was the best conference that I have gone to in over twenty years, um, in, in my role. And it was something really special. Now Brittany, um, is certain that that's because of the group that I went with. But it, it was, it was really a very special conference. I mean, sometimes you'll go to conferences and you will find, um, you know, maybe one good workshop that day, and maybe one, two, if you're lucky, the next day, and then the third day. Um, but consistently, I had two, three, um, even four workshops in a day that were, that hit the sweet spot for me. So, um, I'll lead off with that, and then I'll, I'll defer. Um, we have Brittany Beal, Kathy Benson, um, Alice is part of our team, but, but couldn't be with us tonight, and Jamie Bailey. So it was a, it was a great group. San Diego's not a bad place to go. Um, but it really was nose to the grindstone. I mean, we, we went to conferences from eight o'clock in the morning until, um, sometimes five thirty at night. Um, and, and then talked about math afterwards. So Brittany, Kathy, Jamie, stand in the back and let you go forward.
So I'll begin. Um, my name's Brittany Beal, and I teach sixth grade mathematics. This is the first National Council of Teaching Mathematics, um, conference that I've been to. Um, and it was so amazing, and it was so welcoming, and you were just surrounded by so many amazing educators and people in the field who are as passionate of mathematics as all of us. And so we wanted to start off by just saying how grateful we were for the experience and the opportunity. So I'm gonna start, um, with some of the people we met. So we had the opportunity to meet some amazing, um, people in the field. Um, so anywhere from master, uh, students who are currently in a master's program studying mathematics and education, um, who are kind of paving the way. And then we also got to meet some amazing, um, authors of mathematical mindset. So Joel Boller, who's a Stanford University professor, uh, who founded U cubed, um, who's kind of changing the way we think about mathematics, um, and really, um, pushing toward, um, excellence at, but also different strategies and different ways we can approach, um, just mathematical thoughts. Um, we met Sarah Vanderworth, um, who does a lot with collaboration of students, um, who really accentuates mathematical talk. Um, we met John Stevens, who does table talk mathematics, who really bridges the gap between school and home and really speaks to that. Um, and these were just a few of the faces that we met, and it was an amazing and just, um, just breathtaking opportunity to kind of have these higher level discussions and meet some of your heroes or some of your, um, authors in your, of the books in your classroom. So that was great. Um, I'm gonna start by talking about something that I kind of, the focus of myself. Um, I went in thinking about equity, voice, and culture. Um, I had never really studied a lot of that, um, in terms of a mathematical classroom, and I felt that especially given, um, our school and our community, that that was so important. So, um, I started out looking, um, for kind of the track of equity and the track of culture. So I came across the first one of social justice and making math culturally relevant. So this, along with other, um, kind of sessions, talked about having students have a voice, um, making them have a choice into what they're learning about, um, making, uh, allowing students to discuss mathematics, but on topics that were important to them. Um, so this teacher, uh, or I should say student, she was a teacher in this moment, but a student, um, in a master's program, but she discussed how many times, um, do we as teachers kind of produce these problems where we say, "Solve the problem," and then afterward, "Discuss it in context." And then how many students are then not able to solve the problem? And so then are, their voices taken away, and they aren't able to discuss mathematics in context. Um, so she kind of spoke to, um, allowing those conversations to happen, and not only to have them happen, but then to analyze them, make connections, and have students talk about the cultural impacts on society, um, or the society even small in Nantucket, but then bigger in your state, and then even further in the world. Um, so it was, I, I can't speak enough about, um, social justice and culture and equity. Um, I could if you knew me, um, speak more to it, um, as you can tell. So I'm gonna stop here and allow Kathy to talk about math talk.
Okay, um, thank you again. I will repeat what Brittany said. It was an honor and what Mr. Cozart said. It was an honor to be sent to this conference. It was an amazing several days. Um, oftentimes, when people ask you what you do for a living, and you say, "I teach middle school math," you either met with praise you or I'm sorry for you. So it was very nice to be with like-minded people who, uh, were excited to talk about math, because you don't get a lot of that in your regular, outside of the school room anyway, outside of the school building. So one of the things that I know as a community, as a school system, we've struggled with is open response questions. And I, I went to an amazing workshop, uh, while we were there, that, uh, talked about how to meet students at what they call their solving level. And that could be really low, it could be really high, but you have to sort of frame the questions, sometimes even including the answers for some of the lower level entry points, and kind of build independence from there. And how in our, um, country, on average, they said that students maybe struggle for about two to five minutes on any given problem, but in other countries such as Japan, they will stick to it and one of our, um, our, with persistence, yeah, and they will persevere, and that is something that we're striving for. So it's to tell the kids it's okay to struggle, and if you need a tool, it's okay to use a tool to kind of get them less anxious about the process of learning math and more open to different ways to look at it. Um, and also, the whole, uh, social-cultural reference was kind of prevalent through a lot of the workshops that we attended. And in this one, they were talking about how you could say to a group, and we've got such a diverse community now, you could say to a group of kids, um, "There were five goldfish in the bowl," and they might not know what a goldfish is, you know? And so how to kind of frame things with, with cultural relevance. And I was actually able to apply that the week we got back. We were doing, um, a project making game boards i- in math class. And we had a new student this year from New York who had never lived on Nantucket before. She was very gun-shy about being here. And, um, the, the theme of it was a Nantucket-based game board. Well, she had no frame of reference, so I said, "Well, what about New York?" And she took off like that. So to be able to take something and use it right away is also really such an important and exciting piece to go into any kind of a conference like this. So, thank you again.
Um, I do have Alice's slide, I'm sorry I'm talking in. Um, but her four main takeaways, um, for her high expectations, because that was a theme, um, were, one is just the mindset of mathematics. Um, often, we think about, "I'm not a math person," um, is just kind of thrown around. Um, and she really went to a lot of sessions that talked about how detrimental that is to our students. Um, you would never say to a student, "Um, I'm not really a reading person." So why is that kind of so, um, so not the norm, yet, um, saying "I'm not a math person" is? So kind of just that mindset of it. Her second big takeaway was, um, the person doing the talking is the learning itself. Um, so just the importance of the discussion as the learning, uh, that we can set high expectations by allowing our students to discuss mathematics with multiple approaches, and not kind of teach it as something where, "I'm going to show you, and you're going to copy what I said." No, mathematics is more than that. It's applying different strategies. It's thinking about higher level thinking. It's just so much more. Um, and then, quick win for students is, um, just notice and wonder. So kind of a low floor, high ceiling problem, and how important that is. Um, so you can do something like "Which one doesn't belong?" Having problems presented to students where all students can participate, but then based on various backgrounds or different math abilities, they're able to communicate and discuss numbers and topics and different images in such diverse ways that really unlock their own math ability and can kind of, um, just show how, um, how great they can achieve. Um, and then lastly, um, the struggle is real. Um, we have to make sure that students are allowed to struggle on sixth grade math content, that we're allowing them opportunities to access all of that, um, that if there are gaps, we are not spending too much time trying to fill those gaps and not allowing students time to access sixth grade content. We need to keep, um, kind of showing them different strategies. Um, but if we keep trying to fill the gaps, what happens is the gaps become wider and wider, because they're not having access to on-grade level content. And we discussed so many strategies for that.
Ms. Bailey?
Hi, thank you. Oh, once again, just to echo my colleagues, I had a, a wonderful time in San Diego at this conference. Before I was an educator, I was a sales rep for Pearson Education Math Textbooks, English major. Uh, and I had attended NCTM as a sales rep. Uh, so it was very interesting to go to this conference with the lens of, uh, being, being, uh, you know, there, uh, on behalf of a, of a textbook, um, role. Uh, and also coming into this conference with, uh, you know, I taught mathematics at grade three, four, and five levels when I taught in New York City. Uh, and after that, I, I've been teaching English for middle school students for almost a decade. So, um, I, I have to say that, as my first year as an administrator, I have experienced some anxiety talking about math with my math colleagues and students. And, uh, going to this conference has really helped me, um, think about that mindset that I carry with me about my mathematical ability and my, uh, mathematical literacy skills. And, um, you know, and how did that come to be? And it really, throughout the conference, talking with my colleagues, talking with Mr. Cozart, and talking with a lot of math teachers from a lot of different states, it, uh, it, it, I, I had a really nice time, and it really was a time, once again, for me to really challenge my own thinking. And I have a new appreciation for mathematics, and I do feel a lot more comfortable talking about it, uh, at the classroom level, at a school level, and at a district level, thanks to these, um, these incredible courses that I went to. Um, I focused a lot on the professionalism and advocacy workshops, uh, going into this, thinking about my role and what I could bring, bring back to the district for us to use to support our students and our teachers and, um, our, our district to support student achievement in regards to math. And one of the big things that I was noticing as Brittany and as Alice and as Kathy noticed is a big theme of equity and promoting mathematical literacy. And how can we do that with our students? And many things were popping out at me throughout the workshops, and that was capturing student thinking and harnessing what we find, uh, about how students approach mathematical problems to help inform, uh, practice at the classroom level, and then also thinking about how we, uh, can use that information to build, uh, professional learning teams to, uh, to ta- pay attention to that and then make bigger decisions at, uh, a school level or a systems level. One of the things I really liked was the idea of a student interview. And this was presented by a, uh, a woman who is a professor of mathematics in the Education Department at Hunter College in New York City. And what they have been doing, um, in, uh, the schools in which she has been consulting is taking an old-school approach with a student, using a paper and pencil, and having three people involved. Uh, one is the student, of course, um, and one is the teacher, and then there's someone who's a note taker. And what happens during this student interview is that, uh, the student talks through the problem that they're solving. And what happens is, while the child is working out the problem, the teacher is asking probing questions. So, uh, questions that are powerful and open, uh, such as, "I noticed that you stopped what you're doing just now. What were you thinking?" Or, uh, "Is there another way to show me?" And what they want us to do in such a, a student interview is to avoid saying things like, "That's right," or asking, "Hmm, remember what we did in class last week?" Because those are either leading or clarifying questions. And questions like that are going to interrupt the course of the student's thoughts. And while this is happening, if the questions are asked in an appropriate way, the note taker is going to be able to transcribe everything that that child says and everything that the teacher asks. And so what can happen is, uh, we can move from this different perspective of, well, you know, "What did I teach?" to, "Well, what did they actually learn?" And what happens, uh, if we are allowing, uh, students, excuse me, teachers' time to do this type of practice and to discuss it with their colleagues is allowing them, uh, to modify the instruction at the classroom level, but it can also help us to act. And we can act at a school level and also with district level. They recommend you can do this in real time with a student, or you can film it and then utilize it for, uh, uh, professional development. And it's a way, if we did do something like that for Professional Development Day, uh, that's something that could not only, um, you know, it could, it could really impact teacher efficacy. They could really feel like they are doing some really good groundbreaking work that can have immediate impacts in the classroom. It can also move towards a system change, uh, uncovering, uncovering and making visible the thoughts of the students. And this was one of the things that really, um, resonated with me and that I wanted to share with all of you. And, uh, so thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
As I said, there were, there were many things that I could stand up here and talk about, but I, I chose to. And one of the, one of the things that really struck me was a workshop on mathematizing your school. Um, and that comes from the work of, of Dr., Dr. Nicky Newton. Um, and it's, it's really just interesting about how, what are the ways that we can emphasize the importance of math to our students and to our parents as much as we do perhaps literacy? If you go into most elementary schools, you will see far more, um, things on the walls that are about reading and literacy than about math or numeracy. So it's, it's just kind of an interesting thing. Um, they talked about doing, um, school-wide and district-wide initiatives to, to focus on it. A Mathematician of the Month for every, um, classroom. And then for the school to celebrate and value mathematics, uh, again, as much as we do literacy development, and, and you heard that earlier. Um, there was a lot of talk about the, the key words being engaging and relevant. It, it has to be relevant to be engaging. Those two words, um, are almost synonymous in, in the math world and in what we do, um, and rigorous. Um, there was, Joe Bowler talked a lot about the principles of mathematic, um, mindsets and, uh, around visual mathematics, and I think that was interesting, the, the importance of, um, cognitive purpose. And so I, I enjoyed that. And there was a quote by a student, which speaks to some of the things that, that my colleague said. Um, and this student quote was, "Math is the only interesting thing we do all day." That's not unusual for a student to say one way or another, but we get to argue without getting into trouble. And that really sort of struck me, that, that good, honest debate, um, and, and talking about math and arguing about math, that discourse is critically important in a, in a true, if you're really mathematizing your school. Engineering design challenges, competitions, you know, we have spelling bees. We have geography bees. Um, let's get back to some math bees. And, you know, healthy competition, but, um, to, to, you know, speed up the, the math facts. Using engaging math software, um, and we do, but gaming. Gaming in math is a way, this, gaming hits the kids where they are, where they live. And they are interested in that, and if you can find math games that engage them, they will take off on it, and you just watch. You, you be, you can become a spectator. So we have to find the right things to engage them in. Using specials, and, and we do this, such as PE, art, and music to promote math, because mathematics is woven, um, through those courses. I think most of us have read the research on the connections to, from music to math, or, you know, they permeate all music and patterns, um, and likewise, um, art. So those are some of the things, and what can we do to really mathematize our schools is a question that I would, um, ask our administrators. The other thing that I was particularly interested in, and I went to about four or five workshops, was, um, math coaching. And I was in, um, one from, um, a, a program at George Mason. And George Mason provides, um, a program for math specialists. And the person asked, the presenter asked, "How many of you are math coaches?" And I would say eighty percent of the room raised their hand, because that's what they do and that's what they were coming to, to learn about. And she said, uh, oh, and I was the only superintendent, by the way. And she said, "Okay, how many of you came to that position because you were a good teacher?" And most of the people raised their hand. Um, and again, this is representative across the country, and it wasn't surprising, because that's what we do. We want a good teacher to teach other teachers. But they've been trained to teach children. They haven't been trained, in all cases, to teach teachers. And that's a missing piece, and something that I would like to make sure that as we, um, go with one math teacher and then, I mean, coach, and then add other math coaches, that they are trained in how to coach adults. And that's, it's not always the same. And I, I just, that really hit me. Um, and then there, there are some questions. Okay, how do you learn to coach? Um, what goals should you set in your coaching practice? And how do you assess your impact as a coach? I think that's really an interesting question and has a lot of different, um, potential answers. And then I went to a workshop from, um, MQI, Mathematical Quality of Instruction, which is a group out of Cambridge, um, and Harvard. And they do, um, and they have a rubric for improving instructional, um, focus on, on procedural and, um, comprehension, um, and, and misconceptions in math. And that is, um, something that I would encourage, either that or the George Mason Program, which is an online program. We need to coach up our coaches if we want them to do, um, a great job. And so those were sort of my, my takeaways. And I think at this point, we'll, um, we, we don't know if there are some questions.
What are those beautiful faces?
Yeah, that was, it was a lot of, a lot of fun. I, I love the opening picture. I'll go back to that, my math hero. Um, and people would write, um, who they are and where they're from, and you could sort of enjoy that. But, don't know if there are any questions?
Yeah, Steve, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't, but thank you, guys. I appreciate the enthusiasm, and I'm happy you were able to go.
Thank you very much.
Polly?
I'm just curious if, um, Brittany and Kathy, as you're in the classroom, if you could just highlight a couple of specifics that you've already been able to incorporate into your classrooms that you took perhaps when, when this?
Well, I spoke of that one particular student, but also I went to a really, uh, interesting, um, workshop on working with integers, which is always a struggle. And the reference that they used, it was a group of, of graduate students, and the reference that they used, which our kids know about, was boats up and down. You know, if you add weight to the boat, it's gonna go down, and if you take the weight away, it's go- and so to look at positive and negative numbers with a visual like that was, has been very effective. I teach a small group, um, a small group seventh grade math class. I co-teach it with a special ed teacher. And that, because integers just, they just don't make sense to a lot of kids. So we tried this method and that method, but that one clicked with a few of them. And, and again, you need to, whatever works with, each student could be different. So that was a, a home run for, yeah.
Um, I can actually show you, 'cause I put it on the slide. Um, so I've always kind of done the "Which one doesn't belong?" or "Notice/wonder", um, which is a low-floor, high-ceiling kind of a problem. So these are two examples. Um, but I really made sure that at least three times a week, I was presenting problems where all students could take part in it, and making sure, um, I presented in a way where I was kind of pushing students to use more of that, um, mathematical vocabulary or more, um, of their background knowledge. For example, if I produced four different numbers, um, I was looking to see our students just saying, "This one doesn't belong, because it's an odd number. Does this one not belong? Because when I find the prime factorization of it, it doesn't include an exponent. This one doesn't belong, because, um, when I look at this data set, it's not in it." Um, so there's a lot of different ways students can view numbers or images and decide which one might not belong and kind of have that conversation. Um, this is the only one without the number five, so anyone can really take part of that. And then even extending it for some of our higher learners, um, then what would replace that? So there's some things like, um, in terms of tasks that have changed in my classroom, and now looking forward to our statistics unit, um, that social, um, advocacy piece, uh, the idea of bringing, uh, your community into the classroom. As we look to statistics and look at data, um, I'm going to bring in real, um, data of Nantucket and have students discuss what it means in context. So I'm excited for it. It, it really, um, this conference inspired me in many different directions, as it did, I think, all of us. Um, but those were just a couple of examples.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to National Science Teachers Association.
So my name is Michael Horton. I am the Curriculum Director, Curriculum and Session Director for STEM. As you heard Mr. Cozart say in his opening, that I've been to several NCTM math conferences in the past. Uh, this was my first NSTA, National Science Teachers Association, uh, conference. And I was simply blown away. Someone said that NSTA is the largest teacher organization in the world.
There's a lot of people there. That's the largest membership. It has the largest membership.
You think, you think that math teachers are passionate about what they do with math. Take that times a hundred and you've got your science conference. So really, a lot of enthusiasm. I had the problem of not, you know, finding like one a day. It was like every hour, there was like a session I wanted to go to. I thought, oh, man, let's double book with this one. How am I going to get to both? There were two different hotels, et cetera, et cetera. So.
Sounds like a math problem.
Yeah. Distances. So it, there was a lot of enthusiasm. I hope that comes out tonight. With me here tonight, Jennifer Lewis, fifth grade teacher. Tracy Melu, sixth grade science teacher. And then also on the trip was Annie Weber, seventh grade science teacher. And Amanda Bardsley, eighth grade geography teacher. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight. So the three of us are going to hopefully show off that enthusiasm. Talked about that, there's the arch. San Luis is pretty cool, not quite as warm as San Diego, but interesting city. Of course, a big baseball town, so wherever you went, the Cardinals and red shirts are everywhere. Every time I go to a conference, there is usually some type of common theme. Years ago, it was rubrics, and then it was there in space grading, and then it was number talks, you know, just some of the math conferences. Graham Fletcher's three act tasks, La Niqin Newton's work, Joe Bowler's work. So for me, it was so eye opening to realize, oh, my God, there is so much going on in the science world and the science educational community right now. And this is exactly the reason why we need to go every year, okay, to this conference. Because out here, three miles up the sea, we miss some of these things that are going on. We miss some of that enthusiasm. So you hear about phenomena, you hear about 3D, three dimensional learning and three dimensional assessments, as well as cross cutting concepts. Those are some of the big themes that I saw throughout, you know, most of my sessions that I attended. First off is Jen, and then Tracy, and then I'm going to wrap it up at the end.
So I've always thought of myself as a social studies teacher. I've taught fourth, fifth and sixth grade, but always thought that I was strongest in like the ELA, the social studies portion. But this conference, I could really open my eyes, I can be a really great science teacher as well. I always thought that science, when you taught it, it was a crazy wow factor. But it's really just like everywhere. And you could teach science by just everyday things. And I think that's my biggest takeaway from this conference was like, science is really important because it's about teaching a kid that you're teaching their world around them. Sure, it's volcanoes and all those fun things in Hawaii, but it's just, it's like yesterday, getting ready for today, our MCAS, we were talking about solids, liquids and gases. I'm trying, you know, an ice cube is solid. I'm talking to a student. And I said, "What happens if you take the ice cube out of the freezer and you leave it there?" And they just didn't know, like, that happens. I was like, "Okay, come with me." So we go into the teacher's room and I dump out the ice tray and I put the ice in the sink and I fill it up, like, this is how you make ice. And we put it, put it in the freezer and we watched the ice in the sink melt. And I took out the other, we went back a couple hours, I took the tray, I was like, "Look at what happened." You know, and they just didn't get those concepts. So just that everyday stuff is like really important. So the quote is like, "Science is about, questions about phenomena, but it doesn't have to be phenomenal." That's kind of how it was. And then one of the kids, that they understand the influence around them. It also is about implementing those 21st century skills we want that our students have, starting at a very young age, about asking questions, discovering things, being curious, and then finding the answers themselves, not coming from us. We're just their tour guides through the science experience for them. We give them all the necessary things and then they are coming up with those. I find in my classroom, there's, might not be a science time, but there's tons of science teachable moments if you seize them. It takes like a three or four minutes, you're like, "Oh, my gosh, you're right, that happened. Let's figure out how that happened and then move on." It might be a short video that you look up, or maybe someone in the classroom already knows the answer to it. But allow that kid to have that question because that promotes those times. I also learned that we are way ahead. Even though we have a ton of room to grow, we've at least adopted the standards. I've spoken with teachers that they don't even know what the standard, the NGSS standards are. At least we're trying to implement them and figure them out and how to choose to invest. But I think the phenomenon based learning is the way to go from that. But pedagogy, the classroom has to shift because every time I've been taught science, it's the teacher and I'm just reading the information and trying to get it from a textbook. So that can't really happen anymore. It's kind of like. This is an example of three dimensional learning and Mike talked about. So there's three things, there's practices, cross cutting, and then the core ideas. And he used soccer as a non-science example. So kids learning soccer, they have to learn rules, they have to learn soccer skills and sportsmanship. Sometimes they can be taught mutually exclusive themselves, but as always, it's best if kids are kind of getting out there and figuring out themselves. So the rules would be the practices. The soccer, the soccer itself is that core concept, that's what you want them to learn. And the sportsmanship is that cross cutting, because it implies lots of different sports. So, I don't know how that goes. And then we took it and put it into an actual science experiment, learn about rainfall, water flow and how water changes and how land evolves. The ideas of science practices and the scientific perspective that come along with the cross cutting, the core ideas and the practices. And this is just kind of disciplinary core ideas or the domains that we're trying to teach. The skill, the skills alongside would be what the kid is using to actually figure out what the phenomena is within the domain. And then the cross cutting concept is what can be applied to all of the different domains.
So the three dimensions working together, classic engineering phrase where the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. You can have pieces of the engine stripped apart, but when it's functioning together as a full engine, that's the greater good. This slide wasn't in your packet, so I apologize, this was a late edition, but that kind of lays out the connection between practices, the cross cutting concepts and the core standards content. Okay, and Tracy. Tracy drew this, by the way, on the plane on the way back. I saw this in her. So I was like, "Wow, an art teacher teaching science."
I'm not an art teacher. No, it's sketch noting is kind of the way it helps me to process things. So I started with just some key takeaways on the conference right on the plane. Because anytime you go to something like this, you know that the minute you get home and get back into real life, you're like, "Oh, what did I think?" And this guy next to me kept talking, but I just.
She was in a window seat, sorry.
Scott Kelly, Captain Scott Kelly, the astronaut who just spent 348 days in space was the keynote. And I have to say, of all the opportunities I've had to go to regional conferences, ed camps, national conferences, this was hands down the best keynote I've seen. And for those of you that know me, I've seen Bill Mye and this was like huge. He was part standup comedian, scientist, regular guy. Stressed the importance of equity and giving kids a chance. Told the story of, as a second grader, he still couldn't read. His grandmother was a special ed teacher and his mother would drive him every day to her house to be tutored in reading. And after six weeks, his grandmother dropped him off and said, "There's no hope for this kid. Like, I can't do anything with him." He acknowledges today he would be classified as like the textbook case of ADD or ADHD. And it wasn't until he was in college that he read a book, a full book from beginning to end. It was The Right Stuff by Tom Wolfe, and that set him off on his course. And when you look at all of the things he's accomplished and how hard he still worked to get there, it was just amazing. He also spoke to, one of the president's opening remarks when she introduced him was conversely to what Mr. Kozart has just said about math not being as visible as ELA. Science typically really takes a backseat compared to math and ELA. For a lot of it is just standardized test driven. And she was really stressing to the group that if we are not the ones to advocate for our core subject, then who is going to? And he really took that and continued, you know, his whole speech was all about, if it's not you, then who's it going to be? Stand up and we're all in it together for a variety of reasons. So he was amazing. In fact, when we got home, I was showing the kids clips of his interviews that he has done because he is just really inspirational. I went to, phenomena was one of the main strands of the conference. So I had done a lot of work in the past with science and engineering practices and cross cutting concepts and the disciplinary core ideas. So I spent a lot of time on putting those three things together for the three dimensional aspect of phenomena, how to introduce it. And as Jen said, it doesn't have to be phenomenal. And it's a good reminder that it's just really small things that we take for granted that kids just know and they don't even notice for a variety of reasons. And then the cross cutting concepts is the way to, what was one woman said it best? She said, "Because cross cutting concepts take you through." So it starts things like patterns and change or stability and systems and system models. So in a primary grade, patterns might just be, you know, going outside in kindergarten or first grade and noticing that the sun rises in the morning and sets at night. Up to third through fifth grade becomes more complex. In middle school, we take those patterns and we look, apply it to eclipses or lunar phases. And in high school, taking it and applying it to even more detail. But that cross cutting concept carries through everything in such great detail that those are the things that we really want to take away. That anybody can remember a science fact, but if you can take what you've learned and apply it to something else, you need that cross cutting concept behind you in order to do that. And one of the best quotes I heard on the whole week was, "Cross cutting concepts is what will get you to levels three and four in the depth of knowledge chart." That the rest of it is levels one, day, okay, one and two. But making sure that those practices and concepts are front and center are what get you up the tier of understanding. I did spend a lot of time on assessment since the middle school, we're in our third year of the transition to the Massachusetts state standards. And Mandy and before, with Mandy Pegg before that, we'd spent a lot of time on the 3D piece of it. So we looked at what does that mean? How are our lessons doing? And we went to a few sessions separately and then had some good conversation at night about resources and how do you know your lesson is a good one? How does it fit into a well structured unit? So Equip is a partnership of Achieve and NASTA and another Next Gen Science that they're using to rate lessons and units and programs. Very few of them are rating very high right now, which was very interesting because in our third year, when we look at different resources to gather and be able to use for lesson planning, some of them are getting kicked right back. And it's, this is going to be the benchmark of, if you get a quality or a high quality rating on an Equip standard rubric, then you're going to be in a good place. Tricia Shelton has become an expert in this and using this rubric and helped develop it. She led this particular session I went to and she's actually really good too. She'll, you can email her and she'll give you feedback on things that you do. So we're starting to look at using some different resources with those. Another big takeaway was that all of this, no matter what you use and how you approach it, it all requires professional learning. We went to a session collectively, the one session we all went to together was on OpenSciEd, which is going to be an open resource platform for science lessons that are currently being developed by 10 lead states. Almost all of them are the 10 lead states that developed the NGSS. So they, OpenSciEd is looking at building a resource of units that are NGSS aligned and that their goal is to hit the high quality on the Equip rubrics. But they had said that their goal is not to, it's not about handing a teacher a textbook or an outline and saying, "Here, teach it." That they stress that no matter what you do and how you do it, everything requires professional learning and that this really is a big shift that we need to make sure people are ready for. And there's Scott Kelly in the middle. We were so close. And then it was interesting, the picture in the top left there is kind of a watered down. It was the best picture example that I took because you get so into listening and taking notes, you forget that, like, oh, I should take some snapshots to remember things. But it was an example, because I think a lot of us, especially when you think of how we were traditionally taught in school, your procedure for a lab or an experiment may have looked like the one on the left there where it's place one scoop and on your wax paper, number two, do this, number three, do this. And with the NGSS and kids really using their science and engineering practices to ask their own questions and formulate their own ideas, it should be, here's your materials, here are your problems to solve, how are you going to go about it? And doing what scientists really do in the field. If you go into a research lab at Northeastern, nobody's giving somebody a book saying, "Here you go, do it like this and see what you get." So it's a lot of shifting your mindset and your procedures, which will then shift to your thinking about how we assess kids and how they really understand. Oh, I have Mandy's.
Here you go, I can do the avatar one.
Mandy unfortunately had another commitment, but she left us with some highlights. Her goal was, in a lot of the choices of sessions she went to, was different types of professional development and showing that there are different ways for professional development of teachers, that it could be coaching, sustained workshops over time, educative curriculum materials that are built in with supports into the curriculum. Having had experience with Boston Public Schools and she maintains those connections, she has here some examples of the vision for PD that Boston uses that I know other districts around the Commonwealth have looked at as a model. But that their goals are to not just do science with hands on materials, but to make, be able to make sense of the phenomena and then to critique the idea and support it with an argument. And the sense making should occur across the modalities of reading, writing, listening and speaking. So that is in. And then again, Mandy wanted to highlight the importance of the three dimensions of science learning and that our assessments, like we've just finished Next Gen and CAS 2.0 in science. And it is about measuring and reporting out on all three things for disciplinary core ideas, the engineering and science practices and the cross cutting concepts. So how it's different is in the past, the tests would focus more on process, which anybody could memorize a piece of content or separately identify pieces of the process. But that this new equitable 3D assessment really takes into account all three. And that our goals should be as teachers to be creating assessments that ask kids to reason through the tasks and then explain how or why they got to their results.
Did you take the avatars out?
No, it was at the top of the first one. The left degree.
Oh, okay. I just want to reference this because I went with Mandy to the avatar session. Thinking of a science conference, it's way more than graphing calculators and computers. You know, if you think of a math, big gigantic publishers, there's a lot of textbooks, a lot of graphs, a lot of two dimensional stuff. Science is three dimensional everywhere. There's hands on, there's like, you know, frogs and fish, you know, to dissect. And there's plants like growing out of the booths. There was a blow up planetarium, okay? So think of like a bouncy house for kids, but it's a bouncy house for adults to go into this planetarium and they show the stars on this inflatable like black dome. Yeah, it's a lot, and adults, okay? A lot of cool, amazing stuff. I have not had a lot of experience with artificial intelligence, okay? I've heard of virtual classrooms where, a friend of mine, Greg Schornbeck, who's a teacher here, you know, he's high in the tech department up in Westwood and he also was adjunct professor at MIT. He does teaching from home where he's literally like in his boxer shorts, pajamas and a t-shirt. And he's talking live, but he has an avatar who's like at the front of a classroom, like a room like this. like a room like this. And then each of you would be wherever you needed to be. And where you're sitting is like a cartoon animated character and you go back and forth and you, you click to raise your hand, your character raises their hand. That's the tip of the iceberg, okay? This session that Manny actually was one of the researchers to it, okay? Um, she was given some credit there, um, developing this artificial intelligence is like this panel here, there are five students, okay? Like five fourth graders, um, who are just cartoon characters. And um, as a teacher, you then have to talk into the, the screen and the, and the microphone and they respond to you. And I'm like looking around like, who, who's got the microphone? Like who's, where's the man behind the curtain? It's artificial intelligence where the students respond to the questions that the teacher asks and they can respond to each other. And the one kid in the end was fidgety, okay? Um, and they have backstories and you could read their backstories of like, you know, their home situations and what, which one has an IAP, made up artificial intelligence. The whole point is that you can coach teachers to see how they respond to different situations and you can set these settings in different places and see how quickly can they get the students to engage themselves on debating and arguing and whether it's math talk and science talk, um, applying the practices, it was just fascinating. Um, so again, science conferences like some pretty cool cutting edge stuff. So I wanted to just point that out with the avatars, it was, it was, it was pretty neat.
So why do we build this new school if they're going to be avatars?
I'm still, I'm still, I'm still a people person, okay, you know? I, I don't even use my phone, I talk to someone in person, okay? Um, there, there's all kinds of neat other things like if interviews, if we want to interview someone from afar, we, they could Skype in, they could Skype in doing a virtual lesson with characters that we have made up, okay? That will respond in certain ways. I said, you, can you all stand up? Uh, the principal says that's not a good idea. Can you put your name tags down so I can tell who's done? Uh, the principal says that's not a good idea. So there's certain default things they don't have a response for. So they go to the principal, let's think that's a good idea. I had to, we used to have to do it, it happened to be like five times, okay? Um, finally I got them to put their thumbs up to signal that they.
I want to answer the question, we have new schools because we need people to develop this technology.
Right. I want my avatar to have glasses.
Yeah, I think these guys love it, it's, it's, it's amazing. Um, the thing about kids and Mr. Cozer has a right on with gaming, you know, half the fun is building that avatar before you even get started, just beginning in the game.
It's the future.
Um, so I also attended a bunch of session, sessions from a different lens, from that kind of district curriculum lens. And um, it, it's amazing what's going on in different cities around the country. I learned so much in, in 90 minutes, I'm a woman from Seattle, about a year and a half process they embarked on a year and a half ago. We're doing a full formal science curriculum review, okay? Um, they're looking at all the, um, the companies that Tracy referenced that weren't really great initially, they're comparing them, they're looking at reports, they're testing them out, they've got school committee minutes. So it's really cool not only to have this 17 step process, which I saved on my phone to use when we develop our own curriculum units this summer, which is one of the projects we have going on here in Kentucky. But also to kind of go to their website and kind of dig down because all their minutes are public and see, oh, they looked at that one and they didn't find it was that great, that's interesting, that might save us some time. Oh, they looked at that one, that was great, maybe we should consider that one. So it was really a fascinating thing. They reviewed Amplify, a whole different program, McGraw Hill, STEM Scopes and TCI. There are so many more that are now come up to being properly aligned to NGSS. Um, they just haven't been reviewed yet. Um, Amplify is the one that's getting the most attention. It's the one that Ed Reports, just like with Eureka said aligns the best. So a lot of people just jump on the train and off you go. We're going to wait a little bit, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the things that we have going on here. Massachusetts, if you've been on their website recently, they're embarking on a full science program curriculum review, like what resources are the best? So they formed a committee that over the next year, they're going to actually look at a lot of these resources plus others. Um, you know, FAS, which is what we had, Elmo Two School for Years, has a new program. Um, Great Minds, which develops Eureka, has come up with PhD science. I went to one of their sessions and yes, it's a little sales pitchy, but there's also some good stuff there. There are a lot of things to look at. So I'm working with Kim and Eve Marie, alright, let's kind of sit back and see what the state comes up with. At the same time, let's maybe pilot a couple of these units in some of the places that we have the least amount of materials for. For example, we have a lot of engineering kits at the Intermia School from our collaboration with the Boston Museum of Science. So I feel like, okay, we've got energy and some physical science, but you know what? Life science, you know, going on field trips, that's great, that's a good common experience. But we don't have as much materials, resources that we should when covering some of our life science standards. So I'm talking K to five. Uh, middle school, high school is a little bit different. Um, but it's really exciting to come back and hear about the experiences that audiences are having and share that so we can then move forward and make it an informed decision. Um, Baltimore, I walked into the room and right away I'm like, that was funny because I walked in, I said, man, this feels like a high school group, you know? Because I just came from elementary group where we're getting our hands dirty and we got our pants a little bit wet. Um, and they all laughed because they were all chemistry and physics teachers, okay? So as a physics major, alright, I had to shift gears, alright, now I'm getting really serious about curriculum and, and courses and, and credits and sequences. But it was really informative because um, this is a discussion I need to move forward with the high school science department, the school committee, Dr. Bucky. We've already done a program of studies for next year, but there's amazing ideas happening out there in the science world. Um, number one is, we, we talk about how literacy is important, we talk about how math is important. You know, someone could make a really good case that science, if you want to talk about the future of the planet and environmental science and resources and society um, and solving problems in engineering, that might be the most important subject. And many times it is, as Tracy said, kind of behind ELA and math because there's such this focus on standardized test scores and, and, and performance. Um, what was fascinating is they did this study in Baltimore that the highest students, the highest achieving students coming from middle school were not taking any earth science at all, okay? They were skipping earth science, which was traditionally an entry level freshman year course. And they were going the traditional track of biology, chemistry, physics and some other elective, usually an AP. Then they found some of the students that are more the tinkerers were never getting any physics, which is probably one of your more hands on type of courses. And they were never getting a chance to solve these real world problems. So they came up with this idea that everyone needs to teach earth science because everyone needs to contribute their ideas to solve these global problems, okay? So our best and brightest students weren't being educated in some of the most important areas for the future of the earth, okay? I thought that is a pretty interesting point. So they came up with all these different tracks. Um, you can look at this, you know, it should, this one should be in your notes. This, this is probably a bigger discussion for another day, but it's something that I want to look at um, over the summer. Um, you know, a traditional college prep is earth systems, living systems and integrated physics and chemistry and then some elective. Right away, it shows that every student has to take four credits in four years of science. Currently we have three, so that might be the first thing to look at. Um, the top 1%, you may actually be able to take multiple AP classes. Not all in the same year, that's really a stretch for junior, senior year. So if you spread them out and a freshman takes AP environmental, AP biology, AP chemistry, AP physics, you know, they could have stats and some literature and some other things. But it's more doable if you spread it out that way. In between is where the fun stuff happens, okay? This is not a new idea, I actually dusted off an old conceptual physics book that I had from when I was in probably junior year of high school, 1988, 1989. And physics and chemistry are being broken apart into two different parts. The conceptual part, which all is the ideas and the philosophy and the concepts, little, little math, okay? Students could take kind of a hybrid of physics and chemistry early on, freshman sophomore year, and then junior year take the integrated physics and chemistry with all the equations, balancing, redoxing equations, uh, you know, looking at kin, kinetics and one half MV squared equals MGH, conservation of energy, conservation of momentum, all the math. And to me, as a STEM guy who also struggles with, you know, where students are with math and placement, that was fascinating because it allows students two more years to master Algebra I and Algebra II. So when you get to junior year and they take these integrated physics and chemistry, um, they're just that much more prepared, opposed to hammering them freshman year. There was a debate a lot in the class about, you know, does biology go freshman year or sophomore year? And we started getting into that debate of, well, depends upon what state um, testing system you're a part of and what subject you're really kind of targeting. Because there is some sense to have students have as much time as possible to take a test and have opportunities to retest. But Baltimore, they focus on their biology pretty much in sophomore year because they really feel like some level of earth environmental science is important for every student because they feel like it's important for the future of the planet and society. That's pretty heavy, okay? But I'm trying to get that out that this is my big takeaway from the science. The math is awesome, I will always go back to NCTM. But to see how passionate teachers are about science and getting their hands dirty, um, go to an NSDA conference. So I'll leave you with this, next year, NSDA is in Boston. So not only are we going to go, we're going to send a larger team, okay? Because it's a lot cheaper to travel and, and, and stay. So I want to put that seed in because we don't go to NSDA every year. But I think coming back with some ideas, it's, 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 uh, extremely valuable.
Thank you.
And then we, we, there were boards, okay, with, you know, um, your favorite scientist and whatever. But this is our closing slide, it's just a NSDA. The conference, the exhibit hall is um, just as, just as large, if not larger than the NCTM math hall.
Alright, moving on to questions. Questions and comments, see?
How much bigger? No, thank you.
You didn't mean that.
Zona.
None?
Um, yeah, just a couple of comments, I love Jen, what you said about making science every day and then looking around and seeing what's happening around the classroom and in your day to day life. Because I think it makes sense for kids, it makes it relevant across all of learning, whether it's math, science or ELA. And hearing you all talk, I mean, it just, it's just reinforces how we can help our kids become critical thinkers, right, and problem solvers. And I love the fact that you give the material and then you, you solve, what, what is here to solve? Because I think you've come up with so many great differences, right? Where the kids are going to find different issues or different problems to solve. So I love, I love that, that you're giving the kids that opportunity rather than telling them and then making them try and figure out what you want them to solve. So I think it's great. And I think the gaming piece, you, you know, early on in our classrooms, if we can give to ki, our children the support and the confidence to make mistakes in front of one another, then it's going to be far easier to get up and solve a math problem or a science problem with your team or with your classmates because you've already got that confidence, it's okay to make a mistake. And I think we see it in gaming, when kids sit around and watch each other game. That's a term, yeah, makes sense. Um, that, they're doing that all the time, right? They're putting out, no, why did you make that mistake? Or why did you choose that? And so it, that again, is sort of naturally just sort of giving the kids support among their peers to make a mistake and then move on and communicate about it. So I loved everything that you guys had to say, so thank you. Tim?
Just saying, nothing to see you guys as excited about it as well and then we carry on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for uh, supporting us.
Special education update, Michelle. Please come up.
Thanks for having me speak. Um, I was here a couple of months ago to talk about um, uh, special services where I focus more on staffing and counseling. And this is really um, description um, about our special ed students. Um, I want to start um, by just describing the difference between an IP, individual education plan and a 504 plan. So they are both for students with a documented disability. Um, they're both governed by legal laws. Um, section 504 is national and um, IDEA, the Individual Disabilities Education Act is national, but we also have our own Massachusetts regulations um, for special education. Um, both can provide accommodations, they are both legal plans and legal contracts that uh, teachers must follow. So one of the main differences is for a 504 plan, um, uh, the student um, does not need specialized instruction, might just need accommodations. Uh, the 504 plan does not have to be a set category of a disability where um, IEP in Massachusetts, we have about 12 categories that they must fall in for their disability. Um, the whole purpose of a 504 plan is really to level the playing field to make sure that um, students with disabilities are provided legal access, um, equal access and to minimize discrimination. Whereas an IEP is designed to promote um, effective progress. Um, for an IEP, it's between, for students with disabilities between the ages of three and 22, as long as they have not graduated. And for a 504, that could be a lifelong plan. Um, the other interesting thing about um, 504 plans is that um, we need parent consent to evaluate a student for a 504 plan. However, we don't need consent to implement that plan. Of course, we always work with parents and let them know. Um, and that uh, like IEPs, they also should be reviewed regularly, but there's less regulations and timelines on the 504 compared to the IEP. So uh, there's more paramites and services under the uh, the IEP. But if you are on an IEP, you are still covered under section 504. So some brief statistics, um, we have at this moment, we have 283 students on IEPs that represents 16.9% of the student body. That includes eight students that are out of district and it also includes 12 students whose parents have paid and placed them in a private school. So um, we have a thing called proportionate share, uh, which is part of our IDEA 240 grant, which we have to reserve um, the federal money uh, as proportionate share for, for students, services whose parents put them in private schools because there was a lawsuit a few years ago, a different area um, of the state. And so we now are not only providing services for kids that say, uh, attend the Lighthouse School or New School, but we are mandated to make sure that we're using a portion of our grant for that. So what I have um, going, most of the kids come in for like a specialized reading group and we were able to fund transportation via school bus for them to go back to their um, private schools. So we start that out in the morning. So it gives parents an opportunity to have their kids still get special ed, even if they choose a private school. Um, and it's worked out pretty well this year with the transportation and with my colleagues and the special ed teachers providing those services, so they place them in a, in a booth. Um, so that is something that's kind of been in, increasing as um, the last couple of years that we need to, you know, continue to do. Um, we have 108 students on 504 plans and that represents 6.5% of the student body. So the 283 students on the IEPs, that was as of last week. Um, and like I said, it's 16.9%. Um, October 1 count, I think is 14.2% and I'll explain why, but the numbers have gone up since October. Um, so this is about just students on 504 plans, I just have a comparison from 2018 to 2019. Um, it each, broken down by each building and you can see that they tend to go up as students are getting older. There's also an increase from last year to this year. I think part of that is just good documentation and making sure that we're accounting for these students. Um, and this is kind of a good trajectory because you would want um, you know, students to not need as much specialized instruction as they uh, proceed along and they might just need accommodations. And if I, a, a college isn't going to take, um, isn't going to implement an IP, but they might take some of the information and create their own 504 plans. So for example, if you have a student who has a specific learning disability, needs access to um, you know, books on tape is the old version, but now everything's digital. Um, or extra time for testing, that could be something that would be very easily done on, in college courses and that colleges would work with kids. And most colleges have a learning disability center affiliate with their, with their university, provide that. Um, number of out of district placements, I mentioned that we have eight this year. We had eight uh, point two last year, so we're maintaining pretty steady. Um, at, you know, about eight in the last um, five years or so. Um, so percentage of students on IEPs, we are looking at, the blue here is the Antica Public Schools and the lighter blue is the state. So you can see we're below state average. Um, we are, uh, it did jump this year compared to last year. Um, not sure if I know the, the, the reason besides, you know, we've had some move in students and our preschool population has increased significantly. Population has increased significantly. Um, but you can also see that the state rate jumped almost a full percentage from about seventeen percent to eighteen percent this year. And some of that is how we're identifying um disabilities. So I'm not like overly concerned at this point, but it's been fairly steady, um, except for this slight increase. Um, and then this breaks it down, looking at for this year. By uh schools, and I broke the preschool out. And again, I'm not overly concerned. That sixty-seven percent of our preschoolers. Are on an IP because this um preschool program is designed for. Students with disabilities and of course, we bring in peers, but it really is um under special education. Eight point four percent, um, the elementary school, eleven point eight percent of students at NIS are on an IEP. Uh, almost seventeen percent at the middle and fourteen point five percent at preschool. And then this just breaks it down into numbers. So we have um the forty-one and again. I was just gonna say, I'm not a math person, I'm gonna strike that from my vocabulary. Um, we have forty-one students. Um, on IEPs in preschool, that represents sixty-seven percent. I was gonna try to calculate how many we have, but. I'll let the math teachers work on that. Um, at the elementary school, we have twenty-seven students, uh intermediate school forty-five, and you can see kinda how. Other than preschool, they're kind of steadily inclining here. And then this is what it was last year. So you can see that's a very nice wrap for your science people out there. Um, we have, look, just looking at that really quickly, we we've had an increase of. Seventeen students in preschool from last year to this year, which is a lot. We have had a decrease um for K to two at the elementary school. And we've had the same at the intermediate school, roughly the same, I think maybe off by two. Um, a slight increase of seven um at the at the uh middle school and a decrease of four at the high school. Um, so um Robin Sherman is here and she's uh helping with. Identification and eligibility at the middle school and high school, and we're really trying to maintain some consistency in in how we're doing that. This slide talks about preschool. You can see that huge jump of number of. Uh, preschool students in IEPs. I know that the preschool team was here not long ago and did a nice presentation. Um, but you can see where that the extra seventeen students, that is really like two and a half classes. We're not supposed to have more than seven students on IEPs in a pre-integrated preschool class with eight peers. So we had, you know, four times seven is twenty-eight, so. And we're we're kinda busting at the seams right now with preschool. This, this is um, I wanted to break it down just to kinda look at. Who are our students? What are the disability categories that we are seeing? As I mentioned, there's thirteen uh categories recognized by the state. Um, so autism. And the other, um, I, oh, first of all, that uh elementary school, that includes preschool in there. Um, you can see that we have a a high degree of developmental delay and communication, which would be expected. The other category that includes are parentally placed private school students as well as the um out of district students that we fund. Um, so you can see that uh emotional is high for out of district. And health is kind of high at the intermediate school. Health includes ADD and ADHD. It might include a me- um, a medical condition as well, but usually it's uh ADD.
Good, so are some students in multiple categories?
No, they have, we have to pick a primary. They might have a secondary category. Um, and then the multiple disabilities really should be reserved for kids with more intensive disabilities. Um, the federal. Definition would be like an intellectual impairment and blind or um. More severe as opposed to someone that might have a specific learning disability. Which, believe it or not, is considered a minor disability because it wouldn't, you wouldn't get SSDI if you have a learning disability. But um, so a specific learning disability and ADHD, we would have to pick one of those as the primary. We wouldn't call it multiple.
Don't you? Thank you.
Uh, multiple is for more serious. And and that that is a judgment, and it is a team decision that we rely on our school psychologists and our related service providers. Um, and the team to make those determinations. So this is just like a visual of, you can see. At each school, and again, this includes preschool developmental delay. Um, that's the biggest category at the elementary school. Developmental delay. It uh, we're one of the states that do allow for that. That is only allowed up until age nine because. Some students are, you know, developing at different rates. It doesn't mean that they're really disabled, but they allow us this category. Which um, we can use up until age nine, and then we have to determine a different disability. Or maybe they're not eligible anymore, but it allows us to do some um early intervention work with speech and language or special ed. So it's uh typical to have that um as one of the larger disability. Categories at the elementary school followed by communication. And you can see where a specific learning disability, we have few at the elementary as well as emotional because recognizing that. They're young, you know, they're up through second grade. Um, and we typically don't start looking at a specific learning disability till about second grade, third, fourth. So at the intermediate school, you can see where that is the biggest category, forty-five percent. And then health, which again, like I mentioned, is um often ADHD. Um, and and then at CPS Middle School, our largest is. Specific learning, which is um expected. Um, and then emotional starts to rise. Health is up there as well. Um, and then the high school, specific learning disability is the big one, that gray blue, medium blue. Um, health is a little bit less, um, emotional and intellectual are equal. And communication is thirteen percent, which seems a little high to me at the high school. Um, one of the struggles that we have is making sure that we are evaluating. Students with suspected disabilities and being culturally sensitive and mindful of their language. And so we can't. To, you know, dec- determine a student who doesn't speak English has a communication disability because they just can't speak English. But if they have been getting a lot of services and they've been here for. Couple of years and they're still not making progress, then, you know, we we um have to. Uh, determine if if they also have a disability in addition to being in ELL. So we can't include them because they. Just because they don't speak English, but we can't exclude them. So and that that's tricky. We are very lucky to have um a bilingual speech and language pathologist. Here, and what she does is she will assess for them in their dominant language and then make, then do the evaluation in either Spanish or English. So, um, but that can get tricky. Um, initial evaluations, we do have um a little bit more than we had last year. I think we have like seven more. Um, and again, you know, so um, no, eight more. So that seems to be rising a little bit. Um. And I I think in your little chart, I also talked about the reevaluations, but I didn't put it on on the slide. The reevaluations, we need to um, for students on IEPs, we need to reevaluate them every three years. And some of them stay on an IP and some of them go off an IP, they're making progress. Um, I mentioned in the report about the um civil rights data collection that happened um this winter. Um, we just have to like give all this data to the state, and they're really making sure that we are not over identifying. Disabilities in um for various ethnic, you know, categories. And that we're not suspending certain, um, you know, uh minority populations, et cetera. So they they take all this data. Um, Julianne Johnson is like the Aspen guru and, you know, we worked with all the uh principals to make sure that that happened. And then the other big thing is the coordinated program review. So that happens every six years. This was our year. She came out April twenty-ninth. Um, she met with um this superintendent Cozart, myself, and uh the parent um chair of the snack board. And um, it was pretty positive. Um, she was like, I thought I had ya. Because she she did some record reviews and she goes, and I turned the page and there it was, the the one piece of legal documentation we need for a case. Um, we will be cited most likely in the area of that preschool ratio that I mentioned. So what happened this year was we had peers in our preschool classrooms that then. Teachers were concerned about. They were evaluated. Uh, many of them then. Were put on an IP. And it's really not fair to say to a family, well, now you have to change the classroom and go to a different class because now you're on an IP. Um, and that was part of what would put us over the top. So we weren't maintaining that seven students with disabilities to eight without disabilities. Um, we didn't go above the fifteen student cap, but our demographics changed within the preschool and um. So, you know, I I actually asked for a waiver on that, and I guess they don't do waivers on that, so that was me telling them, so anything they found. Um, and we're addressing that through. Uh, next year, one of our preschool teachers will be teaching two sessions, and so that gives an extra, you know, seven slots, so. But um, we, I didn't really think we would have forty-one students on IEPs this year. It's it's a big jump for last year. Um, so anyway, but we haven't gotten in writing, and she's also looking at my age span. Uh, we're not allowed to put students on IEPs um in a classroom if they're more than four years apart. And so I gave her all that data this week, and I think we'll be okay, but um, so yeah, it was it was good. Um. It was uh much less painful than it has been in the past for me anyways. Um, and then Special Olympics, so we um, some of these are students, sorry about the slide, but some of them are peers. And some of them are students um uh with disabilities that participated in Special Olympics. Last Thursday at the Montanoi High School, and I guess they had a great time. It was a nice day. And uh, we were very excited. Um, and that's that's it. Um, I don't think I have any questions for you.
Yeah, let's check Steve. Any questions or comments?
How do you have preschoolers who are four years apart?
Oh, the the age span is for all students. And so often what happens, I believe this happened last year. It's usually at the high school level because. We are responsible for educating students on IEPs until they turn twenty-two or graduate. So for our more intensive class, um, we had a student that was older. Um, and some students that were like sophomores. So this year, it's not a problem, and no, we wouldn't put like an eight-year-old with a four-year-old.
I must have misunderstood what you were saying. It's okay.
No, I talk kinda fast sometimes, so it's alright. Um, yeah.
Anything else, Steve?
No.
Okay, Zona? Um, first of all, I think it's what a great opportunity that you were able to identify your typical learning students that ended up requiring an IEP. I mean, in the class half full and and even though they put you over your ratios. Perhaps the students might not have been picked up until maybe first or second grade, so. Um, I'm okay with that. What what is the ratio, um, or is there a ratio recommended of students on IEP to? Um, a classroom, like?
Like in a general classroom, inclusion? So, well, it depends on your class size. I mean, you really don't wanna go more than fifty percent on an IEP. So if you have twenty. Students in a class, you would not want ten or more. Um, like six would be wonderful. Six on IEPs would be wonderful. And, you know, and and you also have to look at the intensity of the disability too, and what levels of support they need. Um, and we do group students that need a lot of support just because we only have so much, so many resources. For teaching assistants or whatever that um. And, you know, students need support at different various times. Um, but there isn't really anything beyond like, you don't wanna exceed fifty percent because then you could. You know, could be considered more of a substantially separate class. Say you have. I don't know, eighteen kids on IEPs and two without. That's really not an inclusion class, and it kind of violates the spirit of inclusion. Students have the right to be educated with their peers.
And five oh four students, do they get qualified in that count anywhere? No?
No, because they they don't need specialized instruction and obviously, our p- our teachers, our teaching assistants, they help everybody. You know, when I was a teaching assistant, I used to sometimes work more with the general ed kids that were behavior problems than the specialized kids just because. You're not gonna say, you're not, you're not an IP, I'm not gonna help you. But um, they typically don't require the specialized instruction. So they don't count in general ed. They do count, however, in preschool. Because preschool is students with disabilities, and that would include five oh four. So um, but not in K to twelve.
So in our pre-K, is it likely that we've got students on five oh four or they're all?
No, because, yeah, yeah. A lot of students on five oh four plans have ADD or. A specific learning disability, but they made so much progress, they don't really need specialized instruction anymore. They just need some accommodations. Or some other, could be like a medical kind of thing or. Student that's cognitively fine and academically fine, but maybe just need some, you know. Support like, you know, hearing loss or something like that, like a physical, more of a physical thing. It doesn't really affect learning.
Uh, just one final question, um, because I'm not. Uh, familiar if we have any outside or community resources that we work with with our high school students who are getting ready. To graduate after they turn twenty-two for what, for support or?
Yeah.
I would presume that even as early as ninth grade or maybe eighth grade that we're looking at students. And where the skill sets and the strengths are to help them learn skills so they could go out into the workforce, but. Do you use any outside resources?
Yeah, I mean, and it takes a village with guidance and everybody. Um, certainly the pathways. Program in um Innovation Pathways Program is one of those kind of programs. Um, John, was it today or tomorrow? Greta McHugh was coming from Mass Rehab. I got an email. So she will come in regularly to meet with students through Mass Rehab. Uh, when students are on IEPs and they're getting ready to graduate, typically two years before their graduation or before turning twenty-two. We do what's called a six eighty-eight referral, and with parent consent, we send information. To either Bu- the Bureau of Transitional Planning in Boston. Or if if a student has autism or intellectual impairment, we would send the package to Department of Developmental Services. If it's an emotional impairment, we would send it to the Department of Mental Health. And then one of those agencies, we ask that they help partner with us for that transition planning for when they leave us. Unfortunately, the state has like no money. And so some of the students, um, were having a hard time getting uh Department of Developmental Services or Department of Mental Health. To pick them up. And um, you know, I have parents that are, you know, getting attorneys to. For this next chapter because some of these students need support. They can't um live independently. Work independently and um, so it's frustrating because we work so hard and get them where they're at, and we wanna hand them over. To the right agency and they're just like, we have no money, or they're not eligible. They have to appeal, they have to appeal. And then sometimes it's gonna be like last minute. Um, whereas the whole idea was two years before. We're working with them, they're meeting with them, they're planning, okay, they're gonna be living in a group home or they're gonna be going here. That's not the case with Mass Rehab. They're they're very active with us. We, I think, last time, do we do we mention this TIPS program, the Transitional Internship Program that we're. We um are trying to get set up here, um, which I have to comment on. Classes like resume building for our students with disabilities and finding internships so they get an actual paid job. So we're doing that, and that's all funded through Mass Rehab. But Mass Rehab is usually for students with um, like learning disabilities and less severe disabilities. So we are trying to, yeah, we're trying. Um, Kathy Hacke, Community Service, Met Masri Community Service, yes, she does a lot of those things, but. It just, you know, depends which way the wind's blowing and the budget, these other things. So it's been a challenge this year. I was surprised challenging that has been, yeah.
It's a disability.
And then the parents are doing this next group too, so we're trying to part, you know, trying to work on that. We did have a little um. Meeting with someone that did a similar project in Orleans called um Kid Pod Village. And um, Robin is working on this project with me, and it took them, what was it, seven years? Seven years to get the project up and running, and they're they're, they broke ground and they hope. Maybe in the winter that they'll be able to actually have um. People with disabilities move in, but we're trying to see what we can do for Neantucket because. Um, you know, for our students with really serious disabilities. Um, it's not right that they would have to leave, you know, Neantucket to live in a place with with support.
That's not the community.
We, yeah, we need something in our backyard here, so. Trying to do that. That's a challenge.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Michelle?
Yep.
What? Where do, for example, athletes with concussions? What, where do, for example, athletes with concussions fall into a combination plan?
So, um, they could be like sort of on a temporary five oh four, but if it's considered traumatic brain injury. That would be under the neurological category, but usually it's not like, it doesn't have a long duration, right? The concussion, unless they have multiple. So, um, you could also do it as, um, a health plan, healthcare plan. Um, we have another thing that isn't for a disability, cause section five oh four plans used to be really like a serious lifelong disability. Um, for major bodily functions like breathing, speaking, walking. And then it kinda got away from that to any documented disability, um, but it should be of a duration. So we have another thing that's called District Curriculum Accommodation Plan. So if they needed to be excused from their homework or they needed, you know, to be in a room with no lights or things like that. Um, that could be for anybody, doesn't have to be a documented disability. So for us to look, to even consider a five oh four plan, we would need consent from the parent. And to do an evaluation of sorts, we wouldn't obviously redo a medical, we would take that as part of our assessment. Like we would take the medical reports, um, but that's what I would look at, maybe a five oh four or certainly a district curriculum accommodation plan.
Great, thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah.
Diane?
You wanna have Diane?
Yeah, please, sit, sit up here with Henry.
Yes, it'll sag my neck.
Alright.
I know, I know, I was thinking about that. Need to reconfigure.
Hello.
Diane, hi. You've been busy.
Little bit. Um, I promise not to bore you by reading every single one of those things. Um, I sort of pulled out a couple of things for each school or area, so I will just go through those. Um, NES, we completed the security vestibule, so to speak, um, by using the, the hallway doors and we installed keypads. So that in essence, there's a security vestibule in the elementary school now, which I think is really important. It was Mr. Cozart's idea. Um, we finished painting all of the interior hallways, um, we feel it's really brightened up the school and it looks great. And you'll note in every one of our schools, we have done a ton of repairs on HVAC save. Um, which was needed for a very long time and we're still working on some areas. The elementary school is complete, I'm very happy to say, um, it's on the new software system. Everything seems to be working properly, like the intermediate school, um, the high school and middle school. We spent a lot of money this year on HVAC repairs, equipment and such, but we put out the bid for the software and the controls. And, um, it came in a million dollars over budget, so we're gonna step back and see what we can do about that. Um, NIS, we installed a, a set of interior doors in the hallway so that, um, the. If there's an event or something going on at night there, we can shut down the academic part of the school. And people can use the cafeteria, the media center or the gym and not have to enter the academic areas. Um, and we've done a lot of work trying to mitigate roof and window leaks. Um, we're still in contact with the contractor and the window people were just here a couple of weeks ago with some more window leaks. Um, we're working on it, it's, it's, it doesn't seem to be going away. CPS, um, again HVAC repairs and we quickly handled the damages when the building got hit by a truck. Um, other than that, in the, in the middle school, um, there were some boiler repairs and small things. Um, we've purchased sixty new desks, two classrooms each year, we try to replace desks with trapezoid. The students and staff seemed to like those, so this year it was the middle school, um, we picked two classrooms. The high school, um, really happy to say that that's safety vestibule is almost complete. Um, it's down to the software being programmed and the AI phone, which is actually the mechanism that you would push a button to be buzzed into the school. It needs to be moved from the outside to the inside. So, um, we had the contractor on site last week and they completed a lot of it. But, um, the programming itself has to be done remotely and, um, they'll be back. They were missing some of the brackets to move the AI phone to inside, so I actually was in touch with them today. Um, the library renovation was a big thing, I think it looks beautiful and, um, not without challenges last summer. But we did get a lot done and, um, I think it looks amazing. We replaced cafeteria tables and chairs in the high school and we repurposed the old, um, cafeteria. Equipment that was in the high school and we put it into the middle school, so all of that's still in use. Um, we paved the front entrance and had it all striped as well as the pool parking lot last summer. And again, huge amount of HVAC repairs in this building and in the middle school building. Um, district wide, Bacchus Lane Storage Building, which is an athletic storage building, is nearing completion. There are just a few things left, um, that need to be done over there, I was over there yesterday with the architect and we did a final punch list. So that should be in the next couple of weeks. Um, the Bacchus Lane land acquisition, um, was huge. It was a four and a half years of hard work, um, lots of town help, land bank, planning department. Um, obviously, Mr. Cozart and I constantly hounding them and wondering when, when, when. Um, as soon as we acquired the land, I believe it was March twenty-fifth, when it, the deed finally exchanged hands. Um, we had already gone and gotten the HTC permit, the conservation permit, we had the archaeological study done. The geotechnical boring, borings were done and we had bid out and we were waiting for those deeds. So we could get it cleared and grubbed before April fifteenth, we had a really tight deadline. Um, it is cleared, um, the next phase is out to bid right now, it is due June sixth. Um, the next phase will be, um, sort of really leveling off the land, putting up the retaining wall in the back corner. Fencing the entire property and building the playground, so the playground equipment and the poured surface is a separate bid. That is due May thirty-first, they'll have to work together, obviously, and we have deadlines of August thirtieth for the entire project. For that phase of the project to be complete. After that, we will be moving varsity baseball over there and, um, doing parking lots and some lighting and cameras and things like that. But for right now, this next phase is really about the playground for NIS, so we're excited about that. Um, a lot of work this year, district, I'm talking district because it's really has to do with community school. We did a lot of work on the pool compressors and the HVAC system in the pool area, I feel, I've been there several times. The air quality in the pool, um, is so much better, we have one more compressor to replace, um, I talked to Martin today about it. Um, I got a price and hopefully we can get that done soon. And, um, the facilities ground and ground strategic plan was completed this year. I really enjoyed the process, I wanna say, um, lots of different stakeholders. Dr. Leffery was on our strategic plan committee and I really enjoyed listening to different ideas about how we could move things. Or where things should go or what people thought should come next as far as like a ten-year plan, so that's in place. Um, we have a house at thirty-two Surfside Road that we have three administrators in. And this year we painted, um, trim and we replaced, I believe, eight windows, replaced storm doors. We added a washer and dryer to one of the units that never had one, we replaced a washer dryer unit in one of the units. And we actually had the roof, roof completely replaced last summer. Um, current projects, central office addition is under design right now. Um, and I'm working on an RFP, um, Mr. Cozart and I talked about it today, for the campus-wide master plan study. Um, that's going to be big for us. Um, we need to decide if we need to build a new school, where is it going and if it's going in this location, where are those fields going? Um, things like that, and we went to capital last year and we were, we were successful in getting the funding for that. Um, obviously, we can have that funding as of July first, so I started working on the RFP today. Um, I also bid out the hallway painting and the upper and lower levels of the high school. And taking out the full-size lockers, replacing them with the half lockers and doing the countertops exactly like we did in the middle school. We can't do the main level this year because we have summer school going on. Um, but that project is already contracted out, it was bid out, it's been contracted out and that will be done this summer. The vocational wing floor will also be renovated this summer, that's also been bid out and contracted out. Um, and again, the Bacchus Lane playing field and playground installation, that's current projects. And then I put together, because a couple of you had asked me about energy and energy projects. So I did a narrative, um, on things that we've accomplished since I came here. I don't know what was accomplished before I came here, I just have my own records. Um, and then I gave you each, um, fuel, oil, electricity, um, this is to date as far as FY nineteen and this is some history. And then on the back, and I think this is interesting, well, it is for me. Um, all the Northern Energy National Grid projects we've done and the carbon footprint reduction per year. So, um, I just think that's an interesting way to look at, um. Not only are we saving money in electricity, but we're really reducing our carbon footprint. Um, and it also gives you the years of payback, so for whatever we, for, for whatever it costs us to do that X project. This is how many years it takes to pay it back and then we'll start really saving. And then, of course, I, um, stuck on the bottom, the, the wind turbine savings and all of that. That's it.
Thank you so much, Diane.
You're welcome.
Very informative, Steve?
Yeah, I know they probably weren't as excited as you were, but I had a couple of people stop me in the street. When they saw the work start on the new piece of land.
Oh.
They knew how long it had been, they knew the struggles we had been through and they were thrilled to see that it was getting started. So as I said, maybe not as happy as you are.
I think we had a few.
They commented.
Whooping in the central office that day.
Definitely, thank you. Zona?
A couple of questions, uh, not to be picky, people say that just before they're picky, right? It's okay, alright, so let's start, my first question, let me put my glasses on. Carpet, uh, so it's on the first page, last section, uh, library renovation carpeting. I'm assuming that's renovation and carpeting is part of it, but surely not eighty-two thousand dollars worth of carpet?
Yes, as far as the entire CPS, high school, library and all the ancillary rooms off of it. And we had to break it down, so the first three times we put it out to bid, it came in way over budget, it had too much in there. So what we decided to do was, we took the carpeting, we bid out the carpeting and we bid out the painting separately. And I got permission from the Attorney General's Office to do this because it, I didn't want anyone to think we were bid splitting or anything, but we really needed to get something done. We had torn it apart, we were waiting for the bids to come in, we were all excited about it. And the three times it went out, and then we were running out of time, so we did, we bid out the carpeting. Um, and the, the painting separately, and yes, it was eighty-two thousand dollars and that was the low bidder.
Is that because it's glued down or something?
It, they're carpet tiles, um, they're commercial grade.
And the tiles?
They're carpet tiles, so we could replace a carpet tile if we had a spill of coffee or something, that's why we went that direction.
That just seems awfully, it costs more to, to look better than.
Than it did to paint, re-roof and buy washers and dryers for the apartment, so I'm sorry.
Alright, sorry, I just needed clarification.
No, it's okay.
And then this is just a technical thing because, you know, I just love math. On the next page, uh, the Bacchus Lane land, so was that a gift from the land bank? Is that what that means?
That was a gift from the land bank in the town.
So it's a zero cost?
Zero.
And you guys make sure that that number six thirty-six, five oh one forty, add it, all those things in the column, that, writing those words and it didn't disrupt your formula.
I don't think so.
Okay.
So.
Let's check.
Because the front pool parking, the, pardon, excuse me, front and pool parking lot paving was three oh two.
Okay, yeah, I saw that, it, it just, I just wonder, I know how Excel can be, so. Yes, Mike?
If I may through the, through the chair, um, to say that there was no cost to the Bacchus Lane. Yeah, I, I, I mean, that's a, that's a good question, but the town exchanged properties. Um, with the land bank so that the land bank would give that to the town, i.e. the schools.
Okay.
So there, there were some exchanges.
I think you should pick a note of that in that first column then.
Yeah.
I, I would rather see those words in the first column, like in brackets and put. And, and you could put a dash there, which means zero, to make me question it, but. But at least if you put it over here and you probably say exchange, then it just triggers the mind.
Exchange.
Yeah, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Pauline?
Um, yeah, just a couple of things, comments and, uh, questions. First of all, I appreciate your, um, detailed response to us all when we asked, some of us asked you about the solar panels still on the roof. I know, I think we were all contacted, but I really appreciated and I never once doubted that you hadn't already crossed every T and dotted an I. That was never the question, but I appreciated you responding back, um, in such detail. Several years ago, we had a mold issue at the NES, has that all been resolved and is that, it is good?
Um, we've had several mold, um, studies done, we've had companies come here. Um, I remember at one point the union picked their own company to come and test, they've never found anything.
Okay.
Um, we, we're, Kim? I haven't.
So what, what made us think we had?
I mean, I have all of the studies and files in my office, if you ever wanna see them.
But what made us think we had mold?
We had a couple of teachers that kept saying that there was mold, but, and we kept doing studies and we kept, we would clean and. We bought air purifiers and thinking that, well, maybe they're ultra-sensitive and, and that's okay too, um, but.
But we never saw any thing.
We, we did have one strip in one classroom that Chip, um, opened up and replaced and, and did some work. So we did have, but, but the studies, um, never showed a condition that, that would warrant.
Okay, I own it. Was underneath the ceiling or right near the ceiling.
Right.
And, um.
And on outside wall by the preschool playground.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you, I only asked because I remember it was a big conversation at the time and I hadn't heard anything, so I thought I'd ask.
Good news.
Um, and if it, is it possible to send us, or maybe you will have it and have looked at it recently, but the strategic plan for the facilities? I'd love to just be reminded or foresee it, that would be great. And of course, talking about reducing the, um, lockers and I think it's a great idea to, to, uh, copy what you did in the CPS. But I really hope that we're getting to a point where we can reduce the heavy backpacks of our students. I really hope that we've, it breaks my heart every time I see our poor kids schlepping around with this great big backpack. They should have it on their chests, but it's not cool, I understand that.
Yeah, and you would think that the Chromebooks, so to speak, would have helped with that.
I guess there's still the sciences maybe that are requiring textbooks, I'm not asking for an answer, I'm just. Thinking out loud, as Mrs. Okana likes to mention in the minutes, Mrs. Proctor's thinking out loud.
I think this is all wonderful, but we won't have any more home runs over from the Boys and Girls Club. Or through some of the windows, foul balls through the windows in cars.
Yes, yes, yes.
So part of that project, um, is, part of the bid is a six-foot fence surrounding the five and a half, five-point-four acre acres. But behind where the, um, playground is, is, there's a sixteen-foot fence to stop the fly balls from going out into the street or anything like that.
Thank you so much, I'm always so excited to see everyone, everything they've done, thank you. Okay, committee discussions and votes to take?
I have a vote to approve the donation to the Nantucket High School, uh, to Latin Club from Cape Cod Five in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to improve donation to the CPS eighth grade for Washington DC trip from Patrick and Jody Leveque in the amount of one hundred dollars.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May seventh, twenty nineteen minutes.
Moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Were you gonna change the, just, okay, thanks, it said that I was present, I wasn't.
Sorry.
Um, April twenty-third, twenty nineteen workshop meeting minutes, uh, Zona had asked to have something added, which has not been added yet, so she's asked. Excuse me. Excuse me.
Okay, so the change, and I don't know if I was specific enough, Jen and I just talked about it just before this meeting. The change was that I made the comment that um not going through admin when we're inviting the classroom. Sorry? Yeah. I it's not, I didn't see it in here. I read it. This, I just read it. Does anybody else see it? It's at the end, right? But it didn't make it tonight, I'm saying. I don't, I don't see it.
Are you talking about the April twenty-third minutes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Look at the, look at the.
So what's your line item um line number would help us?
Yeah, it was section one oh six through one seventeen.
Okay.
Is the thing. I think it's saying that Jim Hardy made a comment and he didn't. It was I. It's some, it's in there, but not quite in my words, if you will. Does anybody remember me saying that?
So you have the, you have the quote that you want to you don't. It's in here?
It's not in here.
It's not in here, but do you have it that you verbally expressed it?
Kind of verbally said it.
The second time, you didn't see it then, and so you didn't.
I didn't see it. Sorry.
Okay.
So could we table this?
Yep.
Make the change?
Sure.
Bring it up for our next meeting, please?
Yep.
Thank you. And then transfers and invoices, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent report hiring update?
Yeah, just very briefly, um the principals and the assistant principals have been working very hard diligently trying to um conduct interviews and I just, I want to give them kudos because this is at the same time that they're trying to accomplish MCAS and evaluations of staff. There's a lot going on. Um but they've been working very hard. Um we've had a good pool of, in in particular, social workers and guidance counselors. Um but we still have to land that person that we want. And um that's, that's the challenge. Hard to uh find areas such as science and math are still a struggle. Um for us, the the pool of candidates is small. Um we did find a wonderful science, high school science candidate. Um haven't heard back yet, but uh we're, we're hopeful. Um but those, those are challenges. The uh elementary school has been interviewing in kindergarten and first grade and I think Kim has reported to me that they have some good candidates there. Um the um fourth grade is an area that Eve Marie has been working on. Um and we have made some appointments. Um I think the school committee is aware that um Elise would like to move to the math coaching. And that's great because she is, as I was talking earlier, um trained in coaching teachers. And so that's, that's great. Donna Johnson will take the middle school, excuse me, the intermediate school assistant principal position. Um this is a great time, um and I don't know if it's the last opportunity. Um but for us to recognize Nina Slate. Um Nina has worked in the district for over thirty years. Um and um her dream job, if I can use your words, um Nina came up in Stowe, Vermont as a principal of a little elementary school there and um we all encouraged her to go for that dream job and and sure enough, she got it and um will be leaving us after so many years of tremendous service, so um I I just want to say thank you, Nina, um for all that you've done. And then um in the, in the um middle school, they've hired a music teacher. We have a good um several good candidates for the social worker position, hired a PE teacher. Um so there are some things um moving along there. And I think I mentioned the counselor um candidate of the high school. Um and we have a, a speech therapist in the district wide and a great candidate for uh BCBA that we're trying to land, so um there are some hard to fill positions that we've, we found some good candidates. Um but I, I am. Just going there. No, that's alright. Um the uh in addition to Beth Hallid, who's coming on board and will be in the district tomorrow. Um we have announced, um and I shared with the school committee the appointment of Julie Lamoli, who will be our um new middle school principal. And Julie is coming tomorrow as well. So um they'll, she will get to meet Beth, which is great, but spend the day um with Jamie and and others in the middle school, see, seeing the middle school in operation and um I think even being a part of EWD, which is talking about scheduling. So people are making their transitions already as we speak, so we're, we're excited that that uh Julie and Beth will be here tomorrow.
That's great.
So that's, that's the hiring and um lot of, lot of hard work and I appreciate the efforts of the administrative team.
Thank you. Mike, may I just ask for you to speak to the incoming sixth grade class? Because um I've had a lot of parents concerned and maybe you can.
I, yeah, I received a um, you know, at least two people um reached out to me about those numbers. Um I, I don't think that there's any way that we're looking to have class sizes of thirty in the sixth grade. Um but the question is, how do we address those class sizes? Um there are a lot of different things that we can do, whether we're double dosing in math um and double dosing in ELA for six groups. Um but we need to move in some way that what has traditionally been five groups of students into six groups. There are other ways to do that. I want to involve um Julie in that in terms of scheduling. Um so I I want her a part of that conversation and how that is addressed, but I, I fully expect that um we'll come up with a schedule that reduces those numbers.
Thank you. I just want families to be rest assured because there have been many people in the community speaking about this and concerned, so thank you.
Yeah, we do. I mean, as, as people know, we have um at this point ten students from the Lighthouse School um sixth grade or present fifth grade, next year, sixth grade, who have indicated that they will be coming over. They're not eliminating their middle school. Um but I I think what happened is probably as a few students made that decision to move um because of social connections, you know, a few more. So I, I talked to um um Emily Miller um right after I, you know, heard of that. And she told me that ten students are coming our way. Now, when you put students into groups, um because there are a hundred and fifty students doesn't mean that there's thirty in every classroom because some kids um have ELL, some kids have special needs, some, I mean, there are just so many factors. Um but we do know that we need to address that.
And run it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any subcommittee work group?
Just um Nantucket Education Trust met. Um I think we were up to eighty-eight students. It was reported out in the last meeting who are going to be going off to UMass for the sophomore visit. Um Mike and I will be going and making sure that provisions are made for lunch and dinner because part of our um effort at the year end to fund this program was to offer, provide lunch and dinner, but um I think UMass has arranged to have um private tours for our groups and they'll have lunch in the cafeteria. And then when they get back onto the Cape, we'll give them money for dinner so that, because it's going to be a full day to get there. But we're very excited and particularly excited about, you know, the, the high school guidance um putting the information out and getting such a strong um interest.
Yes, this is a great opportunity for our students.
It really, it would be great and hopefully next year we'll be uh able to add other colleges, but we're starting off small the first year.
Very nice. Thank you.
There is too, a scholarship um committee meeting with Tim and Pauline. Um we, uh the school committee um decides on the McLaughlin and Congdon Scholarship, so they will go through with John and with me um that list and make a recommendation and we'll bring that back for a school committee vote. Um usually the first meeting in June.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, so our agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, we um, we have, oh boy. We have the athletics update coming up. Um we always have enrollment at the first meeting of the month. And um I haven't really spoken in depth to Eve Marie and Kim and Donna, but um we know that that is scheduled for the June meeting to talk about the ILT. Um and there's some really good work being done, so we will share um that with you at the next meeting as well.
Thank you. And then can we just take a minute and look at a date or confirm a date for a retreat?
I have.
Possibility?
Right, so when you last talked, I wrote down June twenty-fifth as that possibility and I'm starting to write down topics as you give them to me. Um so the twenty-fifth.
Are we doing this day ti- daytime or nighttime? Evening, evening.
Did you do like?
Just the one day?
Like four or five o'clock?
Four or five o'clock, yeah.
Just the one day?
For now, we'll do, we can do a couple throughout the summer.
You can do, yeah. So that date is?
Is that, does that work for everybody?
As far as I know, yeah. I didn't know whether I should write it down. I couldn't tell how certain Mike was.
Alright.
But everybody's okay. We just don't have a time yet.
So does four work?
Four o'clock?
Yeah, let's kind of.
Now, four was tight for you last year for some people, and so I'm gonna.
Tuesday, five o'clock?
Four thirty.
Four thirty, four thirty?
Four thirty, okay.
Great.
And we do know where we will be?
Not yet.
No, but I think it worked well. We were at Fifty-Six Center last year, whether that's the spot or the corner. As long as I fix dinner. Do you want Martha? Martha, are you listening?
Oh, not Martha.
So are we in the parking lot at the same time here?
Sure.
Sure. Only to follow up on the possibility of a technology forum if Julie's gonna be here tomorrow. Obviously, she needs to be a participant in any kind of forum that we try to run in June. If you could speak with her, if she's coming again, and we could see whether it's possible to schedule a forum.
Okay, I think that works.
I didn't realize it was tomorrow she was coming. I didn't know that until um a couple of days ago. Yeah, no, I actually thought you had told us. I just couldn't find it when I went looking for it.
Yep.
I did, I thought we had said at the last meeting, and I know you weren't here, General Mike, that we thought we should start with our teachers, our, our district.
Okay.
To have a conversation or hear from them.
I, I asked the um Peter to talk to his middle school staff because I was under the impression that was where the concern was with respect to technology. And so um they will, if they haven't already had that conversation at the middle school with staff, um.
Could we add Peter to the agenda to give us an update on his conversation with staff?
You could do that, sure.
So for the first June meeting?
I, I'm I'm thinking if we want to get conversa- have conversation rather than just a report it to that's not gonna help, not gonna help me learn anymore just by getting a report from somebody else. I think that and I'm not sure, and again, I asked the question last time, I'm not sure what we're looking for in outcome or if we're just interested in getting information to see how it's working from our staff and from our parents. I think we've got to be careful. It's a, it's a wobbly world wo- road we could go down if we start saying we want to look at changing policies without getting input from all of the providers.
That's exactly why Steve wants to do a forum.
That's why I wanted to have a forum. That at least would allow parents and staff to have a conversation with us about any concerns they may have. I, I appreciate having a discussion at a faculty meeting. Uh but that doesn't allow us to get the information directly. Uh and I would like to try to make that happen before people disperse for the summer. I mean, we can discuss it further over the summer, but to get the input um before school lets out is, I think, critical.
So is it, is it more important or is it the right way to do it is to get input from our staff first and then we can have a forum after school is out, so we're not on such a time, tight timeline?
That makes sense.
I think to have it right as our new.
I think that would be fine if parents will pay attention in the summer.
I think that makes sense.
But maybe we put on first that we have an opportunity to hear from the, from the staff, but I would, I'm just suggesting that to go through just another report or presentation. I'd like to hear from the staff.
So a presentation with the staff, Peter and the staff. Presentation, conversation with Peter and the staff from middle school.
It would have to be at a meeting.
Yeah, it would have to be a meeting.
So, I mean, I, I don't know, could we schedule a, is Ju- we have too much going on in June, is that what we're saying?
Are, are we saying that? I didn't hear that.
No, because we're, we're, our next meeting is June, first week in June. And then graduate, that's graduation week.
Right.
I, I'm I'm gonna push back a little bit. I'm not sure that I'm really hearing a consensus here. Um at the first June meeting, we have athletics and the ILT and the uh calendar draft. At the second June meeting, we typically have LPAC. Um but there's not as much on that second June meeting, but it's on the, it's on June eighteenth. Okay, which is the day before. But I, I think I, I, I'm not sure that you want a school committee meeting for the conversation if that's what you're looking for with a faculty.
Well, we
That's where it should be.
I don't think we want just Steve hearing feedback from the staff. I don't think we want just me hearing feedback from the staff. I think we as a committee would like to have feedback from the staff and I think they need, we need to invite them all. And we need to have a real conversation. That's just my thought. And says, okay, so we, we understand that there are parents that have concerns about too much time on the Chromebooks for students at sixth grade level, right? Is, is that what our concern is, Steve?
Well, that's part of it. I think that my primary concern has been adequate initial training before we send the computers home.
Well, if it's training, I don't see why we need a forum for that.
The parents think. I'm just looking for all the input possible. Um and that was reinforced, you know, when I did this survey for Jim um and read through those eight things again. And it talks about um obtaining input, you know,
Community engagement.
Everybody, engagement. And having Peter report to us isn't engagement. Mike, do you have an alternative proposal of how to do this? My, my fear, to be perfectly honest, is that you're, you may be setting up the teachers against the parents. And I, I know that may not be your intention a- at all, but that would be my fear if you're setting it up at a school committee meeting where you're asking teachers what they think. Because this is a scenario that I could envision, okay? I can envision the sixth grade teachers saying, we think that they, and I, I don't know this. But I can envision the sixth grade teacher saying, we think that they should get their um Chromebooks from the beginning of the year. And then a group of parents saying, we think that that's a bad idea. And then where are you going to do, how are you going to navigate that as a school committee would be my question to put in your, in your minds.
Well, I think it sounds like we're not on the same page because I don't think we understand the purpose of the forum. If, if training is an issue, I don't see why that a forum is necessary. I think we all agree that everyone can benefit from more training before they're handed out willy-nilly. Uh, do what you gotta do and the time and uh, what the lockdowns are, you know, for how much time they're spending on Chromebooks. Cause I think that was the concern from parents and, you know, other resources. I mean, Jen, you're a parent. You had a Chromebook concern.
I would, well, I would say just the transition, just from the usage NIS to, you know, joining sixth grade. It's a big jump for students. From the students that I have spoken with, they've even commented that it's a significant difference. So I feel like we just need to look at the way we're transitioning our students. From one school to another and making sure that it's a. It's a, it's a process that we're transitioning them in a way for them to be successful and we're not.
And safe. Now, I, if, if I may, you're, you're treading on talking about a topic that's not on the agenda now.
Right.
You've, you've gone from, um, should we make this a forum or a topic at a school committee? To um, you know, making specific concerns known. And I think people might rightly say, well, then why wasn't that on the agenda if we're gonna talk about it today? But I think that happened because we're being asked what the purposes are. And we're just trying to determine whether we have sufficient purposes to warrant. A forum. Is that a good way to put it?
I will say, I just don't like feeling the pressure or, or having a deadline to have this discussion. And I don't feel that we need to rush to do this. And I want, if we were to do something, I want it to be unveiled in the appropriate way. And I don't feel like we have that right now. I don't think we have a consensus and I don't feel that we have the appropriate way to go about this at this point. I would like to say it's a conversation for our retreat. I know Steve has some concerns about timeline. Just don't think that we could push that right now.
I, not as far as parent input is concerned, I am concerned about getting staff input. I mean, that's after school's out, people disperse.
Can we ask the staff to put an email together to Mike so that we have that information for our retreat?
What are you asking?
Yeah, that's the.
I think, I think that's the, that's the question. What, what are you asking of them? Is this solely about the rollout of Chromebooks or is it larger? And so I think you would need to identify the questions that you want answered by the faculty before. I think the rollout is eas- more easily put off. Not the rollout, sorry. The rollout is, is the primary concern as far as before school gets out, getting input. The usage at home and otherwise, uh, that we can deal with as time goes on. I'm curious about what the staff will have these kids. Think about them taking them home right away, first day of school or even before, actually, when they get distributed. And the training that I think should be done. Before that happens. I don't know, for example, I think we were told this year. That Becky Hickman was gonna address a lot of these issues in the library. I don't know if she's had the time to do that. So those are the, the things I'd like to know about before summer starts and we lose access to those people. The ongoing concerns about how much they're used, how late in the evening they're used. The uh, safety software that we have, et cetera. Those I think we can deal with as time goes by.
Steve, I just feel that if staff had concerns about the rollout, hopefully they would have been in touch with Peter. And they would have had conversations with Peter about that. So I'm thinking in my mind that there isn't an issue on their part of the rollout.
Sup- first of all, it's that supposition and without a conversation.
Right.
But we don't even know that they know. Specifically what we're talking about.
I don't think we know what we're talking about. So at this point, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
I, I, I'd like to make a recommendation, the issue that we put it on the workshop.
I do too. Thank you. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No, please. Not on that.
Steve, it's time.
Shout outs?
You, you can end on a good note, yes.
Thank you. I try to. Um, dancing, badminton and babies. Um, the dance works was exquisite.
Awesome.
And thanks to the community school and Kelly Corbett, is it?
Yes.
For a year's worth of work, my only complaint is that it was only an hour long. I could have sat a lot longer.
It was beautiful.
It really was. Uh, and then not leaving a Unified Arts tomorrow at NES, by the way, for anyone who's not aware. Universe, sorry?
Thursday. There is a Unified Arts. It will be in the auditorium of the high school. Artwork at five thirty and.
I'm sure glad I mentioned that, cause I wrote it down for tomorrow. Anyway. There's a different date in here somewhere, so thank you. Um, NIS was a hit as usual, walking into the library thinking there were ceramics. And they turned out to be paper mache and it was amazing. And down the end of the hallway, they had badminton. No, I did not participate, but it looked so popular. Kids and grownups and it was just amazing. So that was a terrific evening. And community school folks asked me um, to make perhaps our greater audience aware. Those with or expecting newborns, the community school has an outreach program. They'll go to the house and help you with resources and information. And you just have to contact the community school and they'll be delighted to work with you on that. So I thought that was a nice piece of information to pass along.
Thank you.
And now I'll make a motion to adjourn if you like.
Thank you. Second. Good night. Thank you, everyone.